Thank you for joining us this evening for the May 3, 2022 municipal council regular meeting. Before this meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, staff and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Council members, your microphone is locked, so casekeeper microphones are made at wish to speak. For tonight's meeting, we are using Zoom to host this council regular meeting. At the bottom of the Zoom. There are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and able to speak to the council. To comment under oral communication or any other item, you are allowed three minutes to speak per agenda item. Emails limited to 350 words can also be submitted to the city clerk and it will be read into the record. This word limit is set to here to the typical three minute time limits. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from the telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback for public comments. Participants calling in from the telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback for public comment. Lastly, because we are all Latin, soon we will all go to this meeting, we will be taken by.
Thank you. Call the meeting to order. I was going to ask our city manager, Steve Lannard, if he's online, if you'd like to recite the pledge of allegiance for us.
Thank you, Mayor. I would be happy to do that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate that. And if you can go ahead and call the rule, please.
Councilmember Lawler. Present. Councilmember Newfield.
Present.
Councilmember Turner is absent. Mayor Patain, check.
Present.
And Mayor Alahi.
Present. Thank you. And are there any changes in any orders of the day? Does anybody wish to have anything moved? Alright, so then we should go with presentations. We have a presentation from Valley Water on reach codes, which is really a very important presentation. And I think we learned a lot today, so please go forward with that.
Great, thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes, yes, we can.
Great, okay, thanks so much. So, yeah, my name is David Siddiqui and I am CEO of Green Evolution and we are a consultant to Valley Water on this ordinance. And the point of contact from Valley Water, Rosarin Boots aboard is is here as well and she's going to be driving the slide, so thank you very much, Rosarin. So, yeah, what we wanted to do today was provide an introduction for the Model Water Efficient New Development Ordinance that Valley Water has developed. We call it M-Window. We can go to the next slide. As I said, my name is David Siddiqui and I've been working with Valley Water on this initiative for not since the very, very beginning, but for a few years now, actually. And so happy to provide a little bit more detail on it today. Next slide. So just a bit of background on how this came about with the there was a task force back in 2015 that included representatives from a wide variety of jurisdictions across Santa Clara County that essentially formed the measures that would go into M-Window. And so it was essentially based on input from a wide variety of stakeholders. When I came on board, it was essentially to turn the language into something that could be aligned as closely as possible with the Title 24 statewide code and essentially also compile a pack of package of resources to go alongside sort of finalized ordinance language. We essentially completed that work around 2019 and as we were gearing up to bring it forth to the jurisdictions in Santa Clara County in 2020, the pandemic hit, so the the timing was not great at that at that time, obviously. And so what we ended up doing was doing a bit of an update on one of the sections based on some input from the Central Coast Graywater Alliance, who were developing a a measure that was aligned with this this ordinance as well. And then essentially, once we were able to started getting back out to introduce M-Window to the jurisdictions. And that's essentially where we are now. The timing is actually quite good considering that we have the Title 24 triennial update coming. And so essentially, our expectation is that we would be piggybacking the the measures in this ordinance alongside the local amendments to Title 24 that happen every three years with that code cycle. Okay, next slide. So the scope of the ordinance, I think it's it's worth just giving a bit of a sense of what's in it. Essentially, we've designed it to be really customizable for every jurisdiction. We know that there are some you know, local variations in terms of measures that might want to be included, you know, whether there's a lot of residential versus commercial in certain communities and all of that. So we essentially created it like a menu of the 17 measures that are in there. And so jurisdictions can essentially remove the ones that they that aren't as relevant and just keep the ones in that they feel are most appropriate for their community. So the the measures are categorized into the following categories. It's they're listed here. Really, the ones that I think are most relevant to Monte Sereno are single-family residential, landscape irrigation and swimming pool and spa covers. And so on the single-family residential side, that includes things like reducing water waste when heating water. So the amount of cold water that gets released from a faucet before the hot water arrives type type of thing. And then also gray water dual distribution plumbing. And that measure actually allows pretty straightforward laundry to landscape systems to to comply. With the landscape irrigation, there's a variety of just really relatively simple measures in there around water meters, irrigation controllers, nozzles, irrigation audits, and essentially that's designed to not overlap with existing landscape ordinance language that have already been adopted, but essentially just take them a step further. And that's really what all of the measures in this ordinance were designed to do is essentially say, alright, but what's the next step beyond minimum that we can do to, you know, help maximize the efficient use of, you know, this really important resource, right? And and, you know, in fact, a lot of the tie-in points to Title 24 are actually, if you look at Cal Green and the that part of Title 24, essentially there are mandatory measures that apply to all new development. And then there are also voluntary measures that go just one step further. It's really kind of just the nature of the the reach code, right? What's that next step? And so a lot of the requirements in this model ordinance are designed to align with the voluntary measures in Cal Green. And so that's just kind of an example of how we've we've set up the measures. And then swimming pool and spa covers again, we tried to tie it in there. Those are required by Title 24, but only for pools and spas that are heated. So there's some exceptions there, so we wanted to make sure that we covered those as well. So a lot of really common sense things and a lot of this comes down to best practice in terms of design, and that's what we're trying to do as we build new buildings that are going to be in. One of the things that we did as well. It's not, doesn't look like it's changing there yet, Rosarin. But so one of the things we did as well was we did a search through of existing policies and goals in the jurisdictions in Santa Clara County. And so, you know, figuring out the ones that are essentially impacted by the measures in this ordinance. And so for the case of Monte Sereno, we know that there's a city council FY 2223 strategic goal on enhancing environmental sustainability that calls out like essentially specific things that are even included in this ordinance. And then similarly with the general plan, there's a section on promoting water conservation. And so there are a variety of things in there too that have sort of tie-in points to to the measures in this ordinance. Next slide. And so I mentioned that in addition to the ordinance itself, we put together a variety of resources and recognizing that you know, city resources can be, you know, stretched thin and, you know, it can be a lift to actually adopt and implement an ordinance administratively. We tried to put some stuff together to make it as easy as possible. And so we provided provided an overview document with a summary of how the ordinance supports existing policies. So that's essentially what I just summarized on the last slide. We put together a draft staff report with detailed background info on essentially the climate of our region and, you know, all the reasons why, you know, essentially this is important and makes sense for our community. Cost effectiveness report, which is actually really helpful in understanding the various measures and ties in with some of the requirements from the CBSC and CEC. Speaking of that, we also included just some instructions for how the ordinance is to be filed to meet those requirements. Essentially, if this gets rolled in, that wouldn't be too big of a deal, but again, we just wanted to kind of make it as clear as possible for folks. And then finally, some support from Valley Water staff and myself with adoption and implementation. And so that includes, you know, customizing the language of the model ordinance to to Monte Sereno specifically, so that, you know, we get all this menu of measures kind of dialed in properly for for your community and that kind of thing. So, next slide. In terms of timeline, this is what we're we're thinking. And again, this whole timeline has really been designed to align with the Title 24 Triangle Code Update. And again, my understanding is that there's a Silicon Valley Clean Energy Reach Code that you are also considering on the electric side. And again, essentially, it's, you know, sort of perfectly appropriate to mirror those timelines because yeah, just it makes makes sense. So this is what we've we've got here in terms of presenting to the youth commission in the coming months, developing those alternatives for Monte Sereno that involves picking the specific measures. And then coordinating with Silicon Valley Clean Energy on conducting outreach to the public and information sense test sessions. And then based on that input, in September, we'd be essentially providing a specific version for for Monte Sereno for city council vote and adoption. And then the sort of final filings to the CBSC and CEC would happen at the very end of the year and it would be effective January 1st would be the idea. So let's see, I think that's it. Next slide. Yeah, I think that's it. So again, my name is David Siddiqui, the the point of contact from Valley Water. It's Rosarin Boots aboard. She's here as well. And definitely really just appreciate the opportunity to, you know, put this in in front of you all and hopefully work work together with you on it. Thank you.
And do you have any questions for David? Do you have any questions? I I just have a couple. David, you still here?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good. What what kind of support are you giving homeowners? I think a lot of people are interested in going to gray water or getting the hot water sooner to their cold taps than it takes. I understand there's some equipment for that. Who who can they contact to get that moving? Is it the Sun is a Water Company or is that you guys? Who does that?
I think so. I'm sorry, I totally understand the question, just in terms of some of the resources that are currently available for for homeowners.
Yeah, for homeowners to get going, you know, I mean, they want to cover their pools with covers and they want to try to get gray water for landscaping purposes.
Right, right.
Is it a hotline someplace or is there a number that can be given out or is it people that are available?
Yeah, I do. I do know that Valley Water has some programs available for that. I'm not an expert on those, but I do know that that is available. I don't know if Rosarin, if you have any additional information on that, but that's something I can back to you on.
Yes, thank you. And we will certainly send you more information, Mr. Mayor. Valley Water does have some rebate programs available.
That would be helpful if we can send it to our city manager for Michelle, for example, she they can post it on our websites and everywhere else, and hopefully we can start this thing moving.
Absolutely.
Because there's a lot, you know, there's a lot of requirement right now. We've got to cut down on the water use as much as possible. But it, because I know, I think David or somebody else was talking about, I'm intrigued by these. I think there's some kind of a pump or something that's available which will move the get the hot water closer faster to taps or further away from the boilers.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, but but I haven't been able to. I guess I haven't had time to track it down, but maybe you guys can help us with that. And also, are there any rebates you're offering to our city planners who is going to be working with you to redraft the ordinance? The Silicon Valley Clean Energy subsidizes the efforts that we have to put into incorporate the new ordinances. Do you have any funds available for our city to help them with drafting those ordinances?
From my from my understanding, there is not at this time beyond, you know, essentially the technical support and assistance that I'd be able to provide.
Okay. And is this is a new ordinance going to be in effect just for existing homes or for new homes?
This would be for for new new developments, new homes, as well as major remodels. And, you know, if if the community had any desires to change the the sort of criteria or threshold of applicability, you know, those are some of the details that can be, you know, customized based on what you what you want. But yeah, essentially, it would be new new homes and large remodels.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have any questions? Councilmember Lawler, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, David, for the great presentation. Just to be clear, so the M-Window is going to provide us opportunities to improve water savings. So that would include things like requiring tankless water heaters, hot water pumps under sinks and gray water systems. Is that correct? Or is gray water kind of a little too complicated at this point?
So gray water is included, yeah. And and the water heaters is not not necessary. There might be some ties to water heater in terms of the the design, like one of the things that can work is, you know, locating it centrally in the design of the building so that the runs are are short, right? That kind of a thing, but wouldn't require any specific technology for for water heating. But, um, yeah, the gray water, that that measure essentially would allow for the sort of simplest, cheapest kind of systems, which are often referred to as laundry to landscape. Those kinds of systems would be able to comply. I mean, if people wanted to do essentially like a more complicated, more expensive system, just because they they wanted to, they 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 could, and that would also comply. But but essentially, yeah, we designed it such that, you know, even the simple laundry to landscape systems would would work as well, and those would be required. Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Are there questions from council? If not, I will take it to the public to see if any individuals on were online, if they have any questions for our guests here. Doesn't look like it, so bring it back to council and I will thank you for the presentation. Appreciate your coming to us. And this is really very, very important. I think you've got climate and water is just as important part of making sure things done smoother as you go on. Thank you so much for coming. Appreciate you so much.
Right.
Sitting on the next item on the agenda, do we have any oral communications? Doesn't sound like it. Any written communications, Michelle? Do we have any written communications? Doesn't sound like it, so I will go ahead and go to the consent calendar. Does anybody want any item to be pulled for the consent calendar?
Mayor, Chinese manager Reynolds did have a comment to make on the warrant list.
All right. I'm sorry, who who has a comment?
It was Reynolds.
Oh, he has a on one of the consent calendar items?
Yes, yes, Mayor and Council. There's one change to the warrant list. It's the item donation to Boy Scouts of America. Originally, I was given a request for $250 and Councilmember Turner requested that to be 350. So $100 more. And I'm going to void the check if that's acceptable to council. Other than than that, the board list remains the same.
No one has any objection to that? I think you can go ahead and do that. Does any anybody have any objection to that? No objections voiced. And did anybody want to pull any items from the consent calendar? Let me just ask one more time. Bearing none, I go to the public. Does any member of the public wish to pull any item from the consent calendar? Bearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Motion by, may I put them back in check? Second, please.
A second.
The second by Councilmember Lawler. Roll call, vote please.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawler? Yes, Mayor Patain, check.
I.
And Mayor Alahi.
I.
That motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. And thank you for doing a good job on presenting the consent calendar. There's a lot of items in there. Let's go to public hearings at this point. And we have the new business, which is, there's no unfinished business. New business is the pavement management program status report. And so we have a staff report on that. Please go ahead.
Or can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Good morning, good evening, Mayor and council members. This is Jessica Khan, City Engineer, and I come bearing good news this evening on the condition of the city's pavement assets. I feel like it's really reflective of the investment the city has put into its pavement management over the past four years. And I have a presentation to give to you that I believe the city clerk is pulling up right now.
Give me one second, Jessica. It is giving me access. It's denying my access to open the PowerPoint. So let me just find your email. I apologize.
I'm sure, you know, I can start because the images I have, there are visuals or a few slides at. So every other year, the city is granted funds from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission or the MTC to do an assessment of our pavement assets. So this year, the 2021 PTAP grants, the Pavement Management Technical Assistance Program. The city paid about $3,500 and the MTC pays the rest of the money and picks the consultants for the evaluation for every city, every other year in their jurisdiction. So we are on slide three now. So what is the pavement need? Thank you. Management program. So it's a tool to help us make cost-effective decisions and it answers four main questions. What does the city own or maintain in their street network? So basically, all the public streets that the city maintains. What condition is it currently in from a scale of zero to 100? What repairs are needed on any given streets and when is the most appropriate time to do these repairs? And how much is required to maintain or improve the streets in a cost-effective manner? Streets, the Street Saver software is used for this. It does most of the analysis after the initial survey is done by the consultant in person, and it's also required by the MTC. I will say, most jurisdictions in Northern California use Street Saver to evaluate their pavement conditions and their maintenance. Next slide, please. So the condition of pavement is rated from zero to 100, zero being basically just a thin broken asphalt on dirt and 100 being a brand-new street. So 0 to 25 being very poor, failed, that has to be completely reconstructed. 25 to 50 that might be able to be saved through some kind of rehabilitation. 50 to 70, which is considered fair or sometimes called also at risk. And those are kind of broken up into two different categories, kind of depending on the type of roadway it is. For instance, example, residential versus arterial such as Winchester. They might both be in fair condition, but look very different because the reason they're in a fair condition are different because they have different uses. And then finally, from 70 to 100, being in the good or very good category. So I have a few visuals to help you kind of see what these type of roadways look like. All of these images are Monte Sereno. Next slide, please. I will say they are from a few years ago, though. So this is on Eaton. This is a good, it's a PCI of 77. So not brand-new, not at 100, but in very good condition. There's no visible cracks. There's no visible wearing of the roadway. Next slide. This is Dave's Avenue. This is in fair condition. There's some visible cracking, but overall is in really good condition and is able to be rehabilitated through the cheaper forms of pavement maintenance. So it relatively what most laypeople would consider a good condition for pavement. Next slide. This is in a street in poor condition. This is Seabree off of Constitution. Before it was repaved in 2019. There's very visible cracking. There's dips in the road. This had to be ground out and repaved, so the base didn't have to be redone. It didn't need a brand. It was not a brand-new road reconstruction, but it was significant maintenance. Then the last, next slide. This is not in Monte Sereno. Over the past two rounds of our PTAP analysis, there were no streets in very poor or failed condition. So I just got this as a visual, but this is severe cracking, uneven roadway, broken-up roadway would be an example of a 0 to 25 PCI street. Next slide, please. So this might be kind of hard to see. This was included in your agenda packet. This is a map of the overall condition of all the public city maintained streets for this analysis. So great news, we are at a PCI 72, which is considered in good condition. We are at the goal the council had set in 2018, 2019 of the PCI over 70, so that's very exciting. The arterial is Winchester Boulevard, which, as we all know, was redone in collaboration with the town of Los Gatos this past, in the past few months. The one collector in town is a very small piece of Keto Road off of at that Austin intersection, and that is actually slated to be repaved with this Falls Pavement Maintenance Program. And then every other street in this city is a residential street and that overall PCI is also at 72 in good condition. So that's really good news for the city of Monte Sereno. Next slide, please. So this isn't improve the improvement from 2019, so we brought up our good streets significantly and reduced our poor streets from 18% to 7%. So the remainder of the poor streets in the city are slated to be maintained either this coming fiscal year 2223 or in 2324 under our just general pavement maintenance program. And then there's a couple of streets, Bruce and Vista Avenue, that are slated to be rehabilitated under the Neighborhood Improvements Program with a curb and gutter and drainage improvements. And so after those projects are completed, every street in the city, there will be none in poor condition. They'll be there at the at-risk slash fair condition or in good condition. And next slide, please. So this is a just a visual from 2016. So that's when the council first decided to make pavement maintenance a priority. So there were a few very poor streets. We now have no Perry poor streets and hadn't for the past three years. And it's significantly increased our good streets from 40% to 60%. Next slide, please. So in a comparison to the cities in the West Valley and the county, you're above everyone. I will say that this data is from 2020. So there is a possibility with their recent analyses. I know the town of Los Gatos went through a similar exercise over the past few months. They may have higher PCIs than shown here, but we are pretty on point with the other municipalities in our area and above the statewide average of 66. I will say the MTC goal of 85 is pretty lofty. Their goal recently increased, oh, just over the past year or so, from 75 to 85. I think they're really trying to encourage their municipalities to get to a state of perpetual pavement maintenance, which is where you don't have any streets ever that need to be rehabilitated, and that's just not really feasible for most cities. So I think trying to still approach that original goal 75 is a really good goal to maintain. Next slide, please. So just to give you a little bit of idea how a pavement deteriorates over time, the X-axis being years from originally built and then the Y-axis being the condition from 0 to 100. You really want to stay in that fair to excellent zone. As you can see, once you get to fair, the quality drops off pretty quickly. You end up having to spend more on doing major pavement rehabilitation, whereas if you address street cracks and minor issues earlier on in the pavement life with preventative maintenance, it is much cheaper over time and allows you to keep that continuous just maintenance rather than having to do any kind of rehabilitation on the roadway. Next slide, please. So now is where we are looking for our council input. So with these reports, we're required to do several scenarios. They end up being pretty close together because the scenarios are required by the MTC. So we have four funding scenarios and then the unconstrained and the do-nothing condition, which those aren't very reasonable. We're not just going to not spend any money on pavement maintenance. We get formula funds from the state and locally to do pavement maintenance. We get formula funds from the state and locally to do pavement maintenance. So it wouldn't make any sense to not spend any funds. And then the unconstrained condition was included in detail in these reports. Just basically showing, getting the roads to the best they can be. You'll never be at 100 for all the roads in anywhere. Once you build a road, it starts going down in PCI immediately. So the unconstrained condition is really how you can physically like keep it at the best it can be. Um, so the scenario one is our current investment level. I put out where these funds have been coming from for the past four years. Most of its formula funds with some kick in from the general fund. And then we have the maintain the current PCI increase to 75 or increase to five points, which would be 78. In 2020, the council approved a five year financing plan to get all the streets to a 75, to the middle of the good condition by 2024. We're well on our way and that adds up to about $310,000 a year in pavement maintenance, which is what those numbers add up to there in that current investment level. Next slide, please. So as I said, these scenarios do end up pretty close together. The top left here is our current condition. And then the other three are those, those scenarios, which basically shows the more money you spend, the more good streets you get, the fewer poor streets you get. There, the difference is relatively minimal. Next slide, please. So the two scenarios we really want to focus on here are the increase the PCI by five or the current investment level. The other two scenarios to maintain the current PCI of 72 or increase to 75 would not have the city spending all of its funds that it gets for pavement maintenance. The monies also can go towards bicycle and pedestrian improvements such as sidewalks and like extensive striping. However, the city doesn't have a whole lot of that infrastructure. So almost all of our formula funds go to pavement maintenance. So those last two scenarios, the increase by five points to 77 are keeping our current investment level, which would end up at 78, is kind of what we're asking the council about this evening. I will say this breakdown here in the pie chart on the left is using really conservative numbers for our formula funds. They do fluctuate year by year. Measure B fluctuates every two years, just because of the way the VTA does their budget. But I will say, for example, this past fiscal year, the input from the general fund was only $34,000 and not 53. And projected for 2023, the general fund input for to have $310,000 in the program is only $17,000. So staff really recommends keeping the $310,000 budgeting that we've been doing for the past four years and kind of increasing our PCI as much as, and keeping that balance. But next slide, please. So in summary, our network is in a good condition. We really approved over the past five years, we've gone up nine points in PCI, which is a very big deal. The consultant actually went back and redid their analysis to make sure that was accurate. And it was, the city is really invested in its pavement and roadway condition in the past four fiscal years. The existing budget of $310,000 a year of pavement maintenance is sufficient to meet and exceed the goal that the city made in 2019, 2020 and would reach a PCI 78, which is beyond the MTC till recently, the MTC's goal for its municipalities. And I am happy to answer any questions you may have on this. I will also say that this was brought to the Better Streets Commission during their April 14th meeting. And the commission also agreed that maintaining the current spending level on pavement maintenance is a long term investment for the city that's important. And they voted for zero to, to recommend the staff recommendation to maintaining the existing budget for pavement maintenance in the next fiscal year. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Jessica. I think it's a good investment for the city in the streets and it's a good investment in our staff also. Good job for putting it together and staying on top of that. We'll open it up to questions from council member. Go ahead, Mayor Porte.
Thank you for the report. I want to make, I've got a question and then I've got a comment that I can make after the public comment or maybe before. My question is, what's the PCI on Austin Way right now? Where you go from Keto Road, you make a right hand turn as you're trying to get towards Saratoga. There's a couple of speed bumps on that section of Austin Way, but what's the PCI on that?
According to this report I have here is 56.
Oh, it's 56, so, so that's, you're going to be doing some work on that in the next year?
That is the plan, yes.
It definitely needs it. That's my, my only question, but then I've got a comment. I don't know, Mayor Elahy, if you want to take that now or afterwards.
Yeah, let's stay with questions and we can come back. Let's find out if anybody else, any questions? I don't have any other questions, let me see if I have any questions, one second. These streets, the chart that you, the graph that you draw, drew, it sounded like these streets would last about 30 years, but 15 years is about where you'd start doing repairs on them. Is that sound about right?
Generally, yes. Obviously, it'll vary depending on how often it has heavy truck traffic or on what the base of the roadway is, which I will say varies in the city of Monteserino, depending on when the road was built, but that is a good rule of thumb, yes.
So talking about the base of the roadway, are the new roads that are being built or the crews that are being done, are we consistent on the thickness on the roadway? Is that all up to some unified standards that somebody has for what goes into the street? How many inches of stone or cement or concrete or whatever else?
Yes, there is a standard, just generally, there's a Caltrans standard and the city also has a standard and it's standard details. And when we do complete reconstructions, that's not that often because they're relatively expensive, but they are done to that standard. So most recently, Natalie Drive was completely reconstructed to the Caltrans standard.
Okay, so those, the reconstruction would last 30 years and 15 years with a cutoff, I guess. But the ones that you're just repaving to get the PCI up from 50 to 73, how long would those streets last? Are they still going to last 15 years and stay well or thickness may vary depending on what gets done?
I would say 10 to 15 years is, is a good estimate.
And when I say last, I mean really last, but there's only a 40% degradation and then you can pick it back up again. And a part of our, the investment we make depends on the MTC funding that comes to us. Is that funding guaranteed over the next 15 years? Or is that a ad hoc type thing that goes on for one, two, three or four years? Do you have any sense of that?
So it's my understanding, the funding such as the gas tax and the SB one that we get from the state is perpetual. Measure B was a tax measure and I think that was 30 years. So whenever that's over, there's not another measure passed and that funding would end.
All right. And it's, it's, it's good to see that we're doing better than Los Gatos and Saratoga. So hopefully we're doing better than that. The one other thing that as far as funding is concerned, and maybe something Mayor Porte, Max Chuk wants to ask is, there's a lot of construction going on in Montreal, it seems like every street has four or five houses that are being built. And there's a lot of construction trucks and vehicles that are going, going by, going on those streets. I presume that has some effect on the condition of the streets or how long they would last? Do you have any sense on if that is true, if the amount of trucks that are hauled on our streets are having impact? And should we be looking for individuals or the truckers that are on those streets to be paying additional for permit fees or other fees to cover the cost of the deterioration that they may be causing?
So yes, heavy truck traffic definitely deteriorates roads more quickly, that is just a fact. I know other cities have specific heavy vehicle fees, including refu, refu, some trash truck vehicle impact fees. We do have a traffic impact fee that goes with all building permits, but that's not specific or there's, it's not for specifically heavy trucks. So that's not something we have specifically in our fee schedule or with our waste franchise agreement at this time. But it's something that's possible.
Yeah, do you know how much that is? Is it minimal or is it meaningful?
Um, you know, I couldn't tell you for just general like building permits. I will say that a refuse vehicle impact fee would be probably a couple hundred thousand dollars a year.
So Mayor City Manager can help us out with that later on or at some other time. Those are the only questions I have, thank you so much. Any other council member have any questions? Hey, Councilor Law, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, to confirm, how many projects are left? Like the initial Blanchard project, we're pretty much done with the big ones, aren't we?
There is one on the books right now and that's on Vista and Bruce Avenues. There's definitely always room for drainage improvements in the city, but there's only one other project that's been identified and that's kind of a severe condition in the city right now.
Right, as that scope. So this is, I mean, this is such great news that we've gotten most of our streets up to such a great PCI. So thank you for all of your hard work, I really appreciate it. As far as the vehicle impact fee goes, I think we had tried to talk about it before and I know residents are kind of concerned about the cost to them on their bills, but that's to be different. But the percentage of streets that have been brought up now are, where are we at in terms of repairing all streets? Are we about 90%?
I'm bringing to a good, to like a good condition? I'm sorry, I'm trying to flip through my notes right here.
I think, yeah, it was in the, it's in the, I guess I don't need to ask that question, it's in here somewhere.
The street, the current condition has 60% of our streets in good condition. And if the staff recommendation of retaining our current investment, we'd be at 70% in good condition within five years.
Okay, great, thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions for council? If not, I will take it to the public. Does any member of the public wish to ask any questions of staff?
There is one hand up, Mayor.
All right, please call.
SuJatta, they, they control, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much. I think, I think I raised my hand on the wrong. I, I was doing a presentation for West Valley Community Services. So I think this is not where I want to do the comments, so I'll wait.
All right, thank you. It's good to have you here, SuJatta, so look forward to your comments. Anybody else have any questions? Having none, we'll go back to council. And this is a good time for comments and discussion, please go ahead. Because Mayor Porte, Max Chuk, I know you had some comments.
And this is something that I've been really looking at for the past while and I'm the liaison with the Better Streets Commission. And there's, I believe it's going to be on their upcoming agenda to dig more into what the road impact fees could be in two respects. One is on the domestic development, domestic, the development within the city of Monteserino. And then the second one is on the road impact fees for the garbage trucks, the waste collection trucks that travel through. And Jessica, I believe there that the executive director of, of HCL Consulting is going to be doing a presentation at the next Better Streets Commission, is that correct?
Yes, he did confirm with me, he'll be at the June 9th meeting.
Great. And then one of the things is that with the funding requirements, I don't really like to see a burden on the general fund per se. But what, as we're going into the budget year, if we approve this level of funding, then I think what we can do is if we make changes to any of our permit fees so that they get earmarked directly for street improvement, we can then do a midyear budget update. And then if we decide that we want to have a road impact fee for hauling of waste, then we can, I don't think that would affect our budget in 2022 slash 2023, but it may have an impact in 2023 slash 2024. So I just wanted to kind of put those items on councils and our citizens radar screens. Those are my comments.
Thank you. And I guess we are getting subsidies when you showed those numbers as to what additionally would cost us, whether we do, whether we keep it at 72 or go to 75 or 77. Substitution funding appears to be coming from the MTC because the cost of the city is very little. Even if you go up five points, if you can put that slide back, Jessica, do you know which one I'm talking about?
Yes, Michelle, if you could go back like, yes, is that the one?
Yeah, so, so like you go from 72 to 75, our, the cost of doing this jumps from 128 to 222, but doesn't cost us anything. And if you go up another couple of points, it still jumps like 40,000 and to 78, it jumps another, almost 90,000. And that, out of the 90, I guess we're paying 53. So going to 78 costs the city more than just going to 77 and stopping. So the road impact fee would be helpful at that, at that level. But if you're not going from, if you're only going up to 77, the road impact fee may not provide us with much income. I suppose good providers with 18,000, then it won't cost us anything else. Are these numbers projected to be the same over the next three to five years? Or is that just the cost that you're looking at at this time?
These were conservative estimates based on the past five years. I will say the projection for our state and formula funding for this upcoming fiscal year would put the burden of the general fund at $17,000.
Yeah, because I'm, there's quite, quite, so the state picks up more of the funding for us to improve more seats, get the streets to a better level. I guess they're interested in getting better seats all across because, I mean, the impact of having better streets obviously saves a whole bunch of money on gases and spares and the tires don't get messed up. They last a little bit longer, so there's, there's an economic benefit to individuals for having better streets. It's not just that it looks good. It has an economic impact across the board and that's one reason to have better streets. All right, any other comments? And do we need to do a motion or anything else or this is just a discussion item?
I think we need to agree on a scenario, correct?
Staff is looking for a recommendation for funding, a funding scenario, yes.
All right, so you were asking us whether staff should go to 72 or 77 or 78, is that what you're asking us?
Um, yes, I think the staff recommendation is to maintain the annual pavement maintenance spending at $310,000 a year, is the staff recommendation.
Okay, sounds good, thank you for clarifying that. Do we have a motion on that or something similar?
I move to accept scenario, funding scenario one, that staff recommended.
Okay, I have a, okay, motion by Councilmember Lawler, second by Councilor Little, roll call please.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes?
Councilmember Lebo?
Yes.
Mayor Porte, Max Chuk?
I.
And Mayor Lebo? That motion passes for zero. Mayor, you're on mute.
Thank you. Yeah, the next item I'm seeing on my agenda and I know you may have, you may have added another item to the agenda. I'm choosing to print out copy, I see. It has to do with the conduct of city council and board commission meetings and including in-person presence and methods of public participation. So let's have a staff report on that, please.
Good evening, Mayor, this is City Manager Steve Lee and Artis. And before you, this evening for consideration are three choices. And as highlighted in our staff report, one is to go back full in person. One is to go back in person for public officials with the option for the public to comment by Zoom. And the other is to continue working virtual under AB 361, of which of which we'd have to adopt a resolution to continue as we are doing this evening on Zoom. We had a very successful hybrid meeting, which would be considered option number two in the staff report on April nineteenth. It went off very well, and it was very nice to see everyone back in person after two years, considering the last time we had a meeting like that, I think, was March sixteenth of twenty twenty. And of course, there is the, the concern that if we, whatever path we select, we should remain consistent across the board with our Better Streets Commission, our site architect, Commission and our youth commission by either calling them back in person completely if we decide to go that route and or having hybrid meetings for those entities as well. Or we can continue with the Zoom. We're getting, you know, very close. Let's see, we are at May third today. We have the May seventeenth meeting. We have a special meeting on May twenty-fourth, that's two. Then we have June seventh and June twenty-first. Regardless of the decision we make, assuming there's no further changes to the governor's order, we essentially have four more meetings. So if council choose, chose to just continue with Zoom until, you know, the end of June, when we reconvene, we have the month of July with no meetings currently scheduled. When we reconvene back in August, we could just be fully live at that point in time, which is what everybody is predicting will probably happen, assuming there's no further variance of the coronavirus that surfaced. Again, it's under Assembly Bill three sixty-one. So we're looking for council's direction on this item, and we are available for questions myself as well as city clerk. Michelle Estebel, thank you.
Thank you, and I congratulate you. The last meeting in person was really very well done. I think it went very smoothly. There's a couple of mics that didn't work, but I understand you personally crawled into the desk and got those fixed. So that was well done. It was good to see everybody there. So let's, let's have some questions for staff, and then we can have a discussion after that. Mayor Pretend, please go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Leon Artis, could we, could we do what we did at the last meeting where four of us were in chambers and one council member was remote? Or is it an all or nothing scenario? Either we're one hundred percent in person or we're zero percent in person. Can you outline that, please?
Certainly, that can absolutely be done again. And that can be done without having to notice the council member. The key distinction with this AB three sixty-one is noticing council members' locations in a scenario like that. So for instance, we could continue that until essentially June thirtieth and have the hybrid meetings as we did on April nineteenth, just the way we had it. After June thirtieth, assuming nothing changes with the governor's order, if a council member is remote, they have to disclose their location, and it has to be publicly noticed. Staff, on the other hand, and it says in the staff report, it's in great detail, does not have to disclose their location. So staff members can remain remote indefinitely. So that is the beauty of what we all have learned through this pandemic and this hybrid, hybrid meeting and the equipment we have now installed to accommodate the council and the staff in this fashion. And I hope I answered your question.
Well, you, you may have lost me a little bit. After July the first, or for our purposes, August the first, could one person, one council member be remote? They would have to disclose their location, but would they have to allow other people to attend that location?
Yes.
Okay.
Short answer is on AB three six one, allowing for purely virtual or purely hybrid meetings where we don't have to allow access to the public to every location where a council member is participating from only exists so long as the council makes the required findings and the governor has a declared state of emergency. We're anticipating the governor is going to eventually rescind his currently declared state of emergency with respect to the pandemic at some point after August or July. It's unclear when. The governor hasn't made any sort of definitive commitment at this point. So at that point, the regular Brown Act teleconference rules would kick in, and the council would need to make sure that if they are participating, you know, via Zoom or by phone, that they have a location available for the public to show up where they are participating. So if you're participating from your house, you know, you have to open up the front door and post the agenda seventy-two hours in advance, which really does make teleconference impractical. So I think the, the direction that the staff are looking for are, how do you folks want to proceed in the interim while there is still a declared state of emergency by the governor?
Well, if you were to ask me that question and I was to answer right now, I, I would like to, I would certainly participate in person. But as long as the governor allows it to be remote, then I'm okay if one council member chose to, to be at, you know, at a remote location for health purposes. And for example, we're short a council member today. But if that, if, if I, for example, had a cold that I didn't want, that I wanted to attend the meeting, but I didn't want to risk passing my cold on to everyone else, then I could attend remotely. You know, I, that's the way I would come down on that situation.
Okay, any, any other questions? Yeah, council member, good talk.
Okay, just to be clear, Mr. Leon Artis, looking at the staff report, it did look like the suggestion was to continue postponing in-person meetings until after June thirtieth, or we have more direction, since this does apply to youth commission and site and architecture and so forth. Is that correct?
That is the staff recommendation in the report. We only have four more meetings left under this, you know, potentially under this, this, what we've been doing with the Zoom meetings. So that is staff's recommendation, but staff is open to whatever council desires.
All right, thank you. And just to go ahead and finish with my comment on that, since we were kind of moving through this, and we can do that. I'm, I'm tending towards following staff's recommendation on this, although it'd be nice for everybody to be back in person. We are seeing a fairly significant surge right now in COVID cases. Other countries are dealing with new variants, and it looks like just getting a little further down the, the road with a little more guidance makes sense. And also, I think there is cost both to staff in terms of where they need to be and what they need to do to open up for us to be there, which I don't think we're going to be getting real return on investment for those next four or five meetings. So my, my recommendation would be to stay remote until we have a little more guidance and hopefully can come back and, and determine whether we're going to offer the public to, to the right to continue by Zoom and, and what's going to happen in terms of people who are participating remotely, whether the governor is going to have some exceptions for us.
Yes. Councilmember Lawler, your turn.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was just going to ask, you know, what's the cost to the city and what, what is the least costly and least cumbersome, right? So is holding in person or is holding hybrid? What does that cost us versus holding full in person versus holding all Zoom? And, you know, really, I, you know, I just want to make sure that whatever is the simplest, I would like to be in person, but there are only four meetings left, so I get it. Why not just wait till the end of the fiscal year? So I can go either way, but what is the cost to the city?
Thank you for your question, Councilmember Lawler. We didn't do a specific cost analysis, but essentially, the cost, there could be a cost savings, you know, depending on i- if we had, obviously Zoom, you know, on the surface seems like the cheapest approach, the least cost method, showing up in person and having staff be in person. And how can I say this? If Mr. Rudin were to commute in, would cost us some money, but him being remote, I think, is a non-issue. But that would be essentially the cost analysis we could do. We have all the equipment in place now, so I don't see a significant cost increase unless we had to pay for someone's time, whether it be a consultant or, or others who would be presenting in person, like the housing element consultants or Mr. Root or somebody.
Right, okay, thanks. So it's, it's neither here nor there. So, yeah, I mean, whatever you guys want. I, I'm, I'm happy to do anything. I'd love to be in person. I thought we did a really great job. I thought you guys did a really great job with the hybrid. I thought there were a lot of people there that were happy to be in person. So either way, I guess, I guess if Sean's leaning towards, I mean, it does make sense just to finish it out, but I don't know. Any, what, anybody else's thoughts? I mean, I.
Sure, I'll, I'll share my thought. I think there is a real cost. The real cost is not seeing each other in person. That, that, that is the real cost.
Agreed.
There's a real cost of not being able to see, you know, your constituents in person. Because, you know, their language, and they can see you and they can feel a little bit different. I mean, we're lucky in a sense that we did have a pre-pandemic where we had some bonding that we were able to do with each other. But going forward, I, I, you know, I, I guess maybe the staff should be, one, one thing we should discuss is whether we need to let them know now that starting August, we are going to go in person. Obviously, anybody who wants to appear remote, under, in the existing law, they can still appear remotely. All they have to do is advise where they're going to be calling in from and where their address. There is a bill that Assemblyman, Assemblymember Lee is now promoting, AB nineteen forty-four, which would allow a person to appear remotely without having to disclose their location. I was at a cities association meeting last, like, a couple of weeks ago. And there has been, they've suggested an amendment that, yeah, the person can appear remotely as long, you know, as long as they're within the jurisdiction, and, and they don't have to disclose their residential address, but they should disclose where they are to the city council or to other members. So that's a slight tweak on it. So it'll be as easy to appear remotely as, as now if it be nineteen forty-four passes. But I, but I would think we should go, go in person, and maybe the direction need to give staff now is, starting August, plan on going in person. I, I agree with Sean. We need, you know, three, four meetings is going to be fine. We'll go, go back, and they'll give us time to come back. But let's, let's go in person in July. If things, in August, if they're worse, then we'll be back to, and hopefully they're not. We can be back to this form of media, but otherwise, we can all go in person. And in one city, it's only two miles wide, you know. It's not like we have to drive all the way to, you know, from one, one corner to the city to another corner. And it's, it's a convenient for the citizens to get there also, and we can be as accommodative to the staff as possible. And if somebody needs to appear very remote, they can still appear very remote. If nineteen forty-four passes, it'll not be a big deal. They don't have to do the seventy-two hour notice, hopefully. If it doesn't pass, those issues will be, I know I have appeared remotely from Pakistan at one time, and I, I put a notice outside my, one of my friend's house where I was going to be staying, and he posted a notice in the middle of the night to make it a seventy-two hour notice. I didn't feel very safe after he put the notice up, but that was, that's a different story. So, so my thought is that if, if you can agree on recommending to staff that in August, plan on doing in-person meeting, and if, and also providing for hostages to appear by, by remote Zoom if they have to, or if they want to. I think we may need to provide that anyway. I think that Zoom thing is not going away. And then other council members who can't make it, you know, hopefully they'll be able to give us seventy-two hour notice and still be able to appear remotely. That would be my thought. Any other discussion or comments? I guess we have any comments and discussion at the same time now. All right, nothing from us, so let's go back to the citizens out there. Any, any member of the public wish to address? Say something? Any hands up at all, Mrs. Tavio? All right, no hands up for relatively wise. I'll bring it back to council. Any further discussion? I guess we need a motion to direct staff to what to do. Councilmember Lawler, would you like to take the initiative? You're remote. I'm sorry, you're on mute.
I know, I lost my, can you, I lost my screen. It's so weird. Okay, I can't see everyone, but you can hear me, right?
We can see you and you can hear you.
Okay. So why don't we just continue until, we'll just do this out. I, I move to follow staff recommendation.
Second?
I'll second.
All right, motion by councilmember Lawler, and second by councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Pretend, Make a Check. And just to be clear, what's the staff recommendation? If you want to clarify that a little bit? City manager Leon Artis, if you don't mind, because I thought there was a couple of recommendations, but.
The staff recommends that the city council hold just, sorry, staff recommends that the city council hold meetings virtually until June thirtieth, when the emergency order expires. And this will also include all commissions and boards of the city.
So we're clear on that. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lebo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Mayor Petent Metcalf?
I.
And Mayor Wang?
I.
That motion passes four zero.
All right, thank you. The next item is we go to committee and commissions. But I know there was somebody on, on the chat that wanted to speak on the matter, but I don't think that matters, is on our agenda, if I, if I'm looking at the chat comments. Suja, are you still out there?
She is.
Yeah, Suja, your matter is not in the agenda, and I think you'll have to probably agendize it at the next meeting, maybe you want to do that. Because we, we are, under state law, we're not, we can't discuss any other agenda items. So we'll, we'll have to pass on you, but if you want to make a general comment, I, I think we can give you a couple of minutes for that.
Thank you so much, Mayor. No, we'll wait. We will connect. This is our annual presentation that we do. The city of Montisorino supports West Valley Community Services, so we wanted to give you all our impact numbers and our impact that we are doing together. So we can come back and we can, we can ask for having this presentation on the agenda next time.
So Jaffa, this is the city clerk, Michelle Estebel. We actually do have you scheduled to, to present on the, the next council meeting on May seventeen.
May seventeen?
Yes, so I can touch base with you after the.
Thank you so much.
All right, great. That was good, good to hear from you, and we look forward to your presentation on May seventeen. And then we go to council member comments. And any council member have comments on this time? This, actually, it's council member reports. That's first, committee commission. So let's go to that. There's a different committees that everybody's on. And I will go through, I'm sorry, did, Mayor Pretend, Make a Check, you had something, please go ahead.
Yes, city clerk, I sent you an email for my West Valley Solid Waste report. When we get to it, if you could just check your email, that'd be great.
Okay, let me, let me just do it this way. We'll go to Mayor Pretend, Make a Check. You're, you're on the city association board of directors, but I don't know if you attended the meetings on there. I attended, so let me give you my presentation. I discussed it a little bit. There's a couple of issues that are coming up. One, one has to do with the budget. The cities association is going to be looking at increasing the budget that they are, that they need to fund, fund their staff and their, what are they spending expenses on? And there's also an issue of the liability. So I, I'm going to be asking, I, I, I've asked Mayor Pretend, Make a Check to possibly at least listen in on the next meeting to decide how meaningful it is for the cities association participation, given not just the annual contribution, which is not significant, but that our exposure. How meaningful it is for the cities association participation, given not just the annual contribution, which is not significant, but that our exposure can be very significant. For liability purposes, so we'll take a look at that. And. The association, uh, the one benefit of the city association is obviously they discuss all the bills that are coming up. And uh, I I mentioned AB nineteen forty-four, the public association bill, which Assemblyman number Lee is moving forward. Uh, there's also an AB twenty-one eighty-one, which is, and I think I sent out the the report from the cities association. This is the changes to the VTA board. The VTA board right now is elected and uh, each member of the city, different cities. Participated in another city obviously gets most of the five, to get about five people on there. They wanna change it to also provide for uh. The mix is gonna stay about the same, but they'll also require community members who are experts in their fields to sit on those boards. So. That's up for this discussion. There's a uh, seven member Burmans bill and I'm wondering if if and I I'd ask the. Uh, council members who are on the VTA. Yeah, to provide some input to the city manager. If you'd like to see that on the agenda, so we can discuss whether the city wants to support that or not, or. At least give us, give me and Brian some this uh, direction as to whether which way we should go on that when that matter comes up. So that's my city association report. And uh. Then then we'll go to uh, the Valley Transportation Authority, uh, Mayor Protect Mecha and. Councilmember Luthold are on that. Either one of you wants to talk about either one of those?
Sure, I will. The way I usually do it is if I can't attend a meeting, then I will ask. Uh, councilmember Luthold to attend on my behalf. And our last meeting was that, in fact, can cancelled by the VTA. And there is going to be a meeting next week on that, so I don't have anything to report right now.
Okay, do do you wanna report on any of your other meetings at this time? You've got the, well, let's see, you're on the Valley, West Valley Clean Water Board.
Going down the order that it is in the agenda.
Yeah, what I'm saying, what I'm seeing if it works better if if is to just. Whoever is speaking, they can just cover all the committees they're on and then we can go to the next one.
Oh, okay, so I'll I'll continue then. Uh, on SBC, uh, Mayor Elahi, you're you're on the board. I'm an. Alternate, but I'm the chair of the audit committee and the vice chair of the finance and administration committee. And uh, I believe that we recommended to the board that. Uh, and the board uh, agreed to hold the one percent rate reduction. So so SBC customers would always be, would always be for the next budget year would be. One percent cost savings over whatever PG&E rates are. And PG&E rates are going up and it ends up being. Kind of a a positive thing for Silicon Valley Clean Energy, because when uh. When SB, when PG&E increase their generation rates. Then this thing that uh, councilmember Luthold knows is the PCMI. Eight uh, charge, that actually ends up going down. That's the power charge indifference amount. So that's a, that's a positive thing for Silicon Valley Clean Energy. Uh, in terms of West Valley Clean Water. Uh, we are meeting this Thursday at four PM. And that meeting goes for an hour and then afterwards is the West Valley Solid Waste. Uh, and recycling JPA and that goes at five o'clock. The West Valley Solid Waste is doing their budget, upcoming budget and they're setting rates. And uh, the collection, the hauling company wanted those rates to go up, but the JPA. Uh, the work by the executive director is gonna hold those uh, rates to a smaller increase, but they will go up. And uh, that's all of my items, but I wanna circle back at the end. When uh, our city clerk has my photos from the uh. Ride along in the collection truck on last Thursday that I can tell you about.
We look forward to seeing that and uh, thank you for doing that. So let's go ahead and uh, councilmember Lawler. If you want, go ahead and give any reports that you may have.
I don't have any reports at this time. We haven't had any meetings since the last meeting.
Thank you, uh, council member Luthold.
Uh, no new meetings. Um, there have been a bunch of good correspondence from the uh, Santa Clara County Library. Sharing uh, what's going on with uh, their various programs and their newsletter and all. I'll make sure that those are getting passed along and either staff is posting them or I'll take the initiative to at least get them out on next door since. Uh, the library is a great resource and uh, and a wonderful success story that we participate in.
Thank you, thank you so much. Yeah, there's a lot happening. Libraries have totally changed, you know. Really great part of the library, now you can. Have an app and order almost any book that's out there and it'll be sent to your iPhone.
Yeah, and incidentally, we we were just approving uh, the recommendations on the budget. Uh, there is a large increase in uh, in E resources, of course. Um, but a lot has been learned. Um, Santa Clara Library District is really continuing to maintain that leadership uh, role that they have. And and continuing to expand, but they're also, um, they've they've got their library hours are all back to regular hours. And so in person and the resources they provide, the homework help, the the web access, all of those things are up and running. And I'm doing really uh, wonderful work for the community. So um, recommend the E resources to everybody as well as. Uh, getting in in person and uh, seeing what the libraries are now offering. So it's all good news on there.
Thank you for sharing that. Alright, uh, I guess we we probably did our comments, but are there any? There's, I guess there's at least one slide that we need to see. Uh, for that, uh, Mayor Potemekichak pointed out, so let's get to that. You're on mute?
My apologies. Well, Michelle is putting that up. What I'll do is, oh, there we are. There's. So what I did was I went on a ride along. Uh, with a collection truck and it does two things. It's the split body that has the. Uh, basically the the uh, the trash in it that's going to the landfill and then also on the other half. Yard waste and the driver I met at their location at five twenty in the morning. I was there a few minutes early. And uh, there's forty-four trucks that go out. And I got into the truck that handles south of Highway nine, not north of Highway nine. So uh, I, this is a shot of of the inside of the vehicle. And it looks like it's not, it's bright outside, but it it was dark. And there's a lot of controls in there. Uh, I, we we left at five twenty in the morning. We started doing the pickups. And it's really interesting because he was going to cul-de-sacs. Where there's building construction underway. And I could, I, he's like, okay, we're gonna go to this location first and he'd do, he'd pick up some some, some uh, waste. And then he would go past other houses and say, well, we've gotta go to a, we've gotta go to a cul-de-sac. And what he was doing was when the construction starts on a Thursday morning. He can get trapped into a, into a cul-de-sac in that he can't back out of it. You know, and and the ones off of Highway nine are horrible because he has to go in. And if if the construction trucks are in there, he can't turn around. So what he does is he picks up all the, all the waste and then he goes back on his quote, normal route and picks up. The the streets that he's missed. So, uh, but he knows, he knows all of his customers. He knows they're. Some of them set their garbage out nicely, others don't and and he he will quote, write them up and then it. At his, on a few times, he would just get out of the truck and say, okay, you know. I'm gonna, I know this person never puts their, their uh, cans in the correct, their bins in the correct location. I've written them up eight times and they're just not gonna change, so I'll just do it for them, like really customer focused. I was super impressed. And then there's someone else that is like, you know, he stops. He phones in the dispatch, radios the dispatcher and says, I uh, this, there's no garbage. Uh, there's no bins out. It's six twenty-three in the morning. And this person is is, it doesn't have their garbage out because. They try to game the system and they say, oh, I had my garbage cans out, so he, he knows that who's gaming the system. I'll tell you right now, you cannot game the collection drivers. The only ones that that don't do well are the folks that if the collection driver. Doesn't show up for work and they have to call a relief driver in, that's when it gets really difficult and that's where you have the missed pickups. So, um, and the other thing was that as we were going along south of Highway nine. There's also uh, the 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 recycling truck was passing us. As we went to these different cul-de-sacs where the construction activity was. Um, so that was a real eye opener for me and the the other thing that that is interesting. Is that the county, their contract is separate from Los Gatos and Monte Serena, Campbell and Saratoga. So the West Valley uh, collection and recycling, that contract. They'll, they pick up everything, but they don't pick up the county pockets. So there's an opportunity for in the contract renegotiations to work with the county. And then take those pockets and actually have. Have them being done under our contract in other areas that are adjacent be done, in our area be done. By the county, so we'd only have one truck or one, one set of trucks going down the street versus two. And I think uh, Mayor Elahi, that's what happens on your street, I believe, because there's a county pocket at the end. And what will be required is to work with the county because on the. On the JPA side with Monte Serena, Los Gatos, Saratoga and Campbell. We form a JPA, but the county, it's a single department, so they they don't have a a board that sits on top of them. All they've got is a department head, so what we're gonna have to do. Being the the jurisdictions is we'll have to work with our county supervisors. So that we can get them to understand the situation so that they can have their uh. Department work with us, with us, with the JPA on that. So that's an opportunity. Um, could you put the 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 next one in uh, please? Uh, Michelle? The next, there. So that's out of the front window as I'm driving away. As I'm driving, I'm in the left-hand side, but as the driver is driving away, and if you can imagine, this whole fleet is going by. Um, and these trucks are are pretty high-tech. The driver drives with his right hand. And with his left hand, he's got a joystick and that joystick, he's moving all the time. Because he's gotta tell it to extend, to twist, to do whatever, and he just, he just does it. Um, and uh. Uh, when he has to stop his truck and get out, he has to stop the truck. He has to shut his systems down, take his seatbelt off. Get out, put the garbage cans, you know, do whatever, jump back in, put a seatbelt in, restart those systems and then start driving. But I never, I never took a picture of the joystick. Could you put the next slide up, please, or the next photo, please, Michelle? Yeah, so so this is from the inside of the truck. And the four people that are standing there, they were the the senior people and. Paul on the right-hand side, he said to me, he said, you know, Brian, I've been working here for twenty years and you're the very first. Elected official that has ever gone on a ride along. So uh, Liz, you were saying that you'd like to see the photos and here are the photos. So so there you go, but but I I also think that. I know that the contract is being re, is being renegotiated, is being put out for bid, but. Uh, we really do need to recognize as the city of Monte Serena, I believe the drivers that do a really good job for us. And they don't get very much recognition, so that'll be a a separate item anyways. That's, that's my report on the ride along.
Thank you very much. That's amazing what you've done there and provided us with the, you know, things that we take for granted. And these guys really work hard and, you know, give hours and everything else, so. And and everything looks so clean. I mean, you think there's a garbage truck, it'd be really dirty and smell like, I I assume it's still smelling, but. It's it's, that's impressive. Thank you so much. Anyone else have any of these comments? Yeah, councilor Lawler, please go ahead.
I just wanna say, that's really amazing that you did that. I mean, the fact that you were the first elected official in twenty years to do that, that that. That says something, so I'm really glad you did that and opened our eyes to the process. It's really important. And I'm happy for the pictures and I'm sorry I missed you. I guess you were south of Highway nine, but I was hoping that I'd see you go by. Um, anyway, I always wave to these guys because I know they get up early and I know it's a long day for them, so thank you for doing that. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any anybody else have any comments? Alright, I guess that's. Any council member have any other comments on any other subject? If not, to the city manager's report? Michelle Leonardis?
Thank you, Mayor. So um, I just wanted to bring the council's attention to a large green dumpster that is in the parking lot of the Monte Serena City Hall facility. Near the, what we call the annex building and right now that dumpster is being filled with uh, debris and and old furniture. Um, and things that the city no longer uses, items that were uh, stored over time in the building. So um, as per council's direction, I believe it was at the meeting before last in order to move the annex building. Forward uh, in preparation for it to be bid. So um, just wanted to bring, if you if you see a large dumpster or if a resident asks you about that dumpster, it'll be here for about a week. It's getting filled pretty quickly. One other item I wanted to uh, bring to council's attention. Kind of a late notice, but uh, there is something called turnaround scholarship luncheon Thursday at noon over at the Los Gatos Lodge. There'll be three Los Gatos council members there. Supervisor Wasserman will be there. This is sponsored by the Kiwanis. Uh, Club of Los Gatos and Monte Serena. It's a very good event. Um, it highlights uh, kids from the local high schools. Uh, whether it's Saratoga High School, Los Gatos High School, who uh, found themselves in difficult positions in life. Were able to turn their, you know, their grades were failing because of such, were were able to uh, turn around their situation. And get recognized by the community, particularly the Kiwanis Club and graduate in many cases uh, with honors and. Move on and be accepted at a college. Um, so uh, it's it's a very good event. If you have an opportunity to attend. It is Thursday at twelve and I did send you an email this evening on that. That concludes uh, my report. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Uh, and and I, and it's good to see that you're taking charge on like, getting that. Annex building cleaned up for the bidding process. Appreciate your personal touch on that. Thank you. Uh, any?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I did wanna give council a heads up. I believe that we're gonna get some positive ink in the Los Gatos Weekly Times. Slash the San Jose Mercury News on the uh, work with the uh. Annex, the remodel and uh. I think that there should be some quotes in there from uh, city manager Leonardis. And our architect and myself, so uh, I think that should be coming through in the next, sometime later this week. Just wanted to give you heads up on that.
Thank you and thank, thank you for working on that, Brian. I know you've done a lot of work uh, moving that forward. I I can see the, the the standard, whatever you get done out there, it's gonna be a big accomplishment. Thanks for doing that. Is uh. Anyone else have any other comments? I guess we're now on future agenda items. Alright, sounds like we've talked about a couple of things. One was to see if we wanna get that uh, VTA proposal that's coming up for the new board. Maybe we need to look at that uh, on the future agenda. And uh. That's the only comment I have. Anyone else have any other comment? Any member of the public wanna see anything on the future agenda? Seeing none, I think we're at the end of the meeting. I will go ahead and close the meeting. Thank you, everybody. Have a nice weekend when it comes up. Take care.